Thank you, honey.
Hey, guys.
Good evening.
Dave, did you notice Lowell Street there? They got some framing going on.
Progress.
Yep.
Glacial progress. Looks like we're waiting for a couple more.
If I can get here on time, so should they.
Really?
Really?
And your computer started without help, it looked like.
What?
And your computer started without help, it looked like.
Well, actually, this is my wife's computer. I'm still trying to update and swirling and I gave up on it. I said, here you go, honey. Get me up and running. Always a challenge, Craig. Always a challenge.
Tom, welcome. We know Mickey will not be here this evening, but expecting Jim. All right, Jim, we'll be along. Okay, maybe some connectivity delays. Well, we do have some administrative things we could take up first, so. Why don't we just get started because we have everyone else here, including Gail. Cannot start the meeting without Gail. All right. All right, we'll call the meeting to order for Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals on February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll start with a roll call of members. Chip Turbell.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Tom Lucy.
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Mickey Feely is excused. Dave Hatfield Chair is present and we expect Jim McBane to be joining us shortly. We'll acknowledge that for the record when he does arrive. There is no legal notice to read this evening, no new hearings on the agenda, just continued ones. So there's no legal notice, so we will jump right in to some administrative matters that we always take up front for specific hearings in case anyone's here for them. From Attorney Brian McGrail dated today regarding Kimmon Block LLC three sixty-nine to apologies, I gotta start the captions. Sorry about that. Close captioning part, okay. So to restate, the meeting has been called to order. Roll call of members has been taken. No legal notice to be read this evening. And we're taking up some correspondence here. So from Attorney Brian McGrail dated today, February twenty-second regarding Kimmon Block LLC three sixty-nine to three seventy-one Main Street. Case number is twenty-three dash fourteen through seventeen. Requesting that we continue this matter to our meeting on March eighth. Still in the process of working on revisions to the plans as requested by the board. And the letter is also confirming that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and file any decisions through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I move that we continue this to March eighth.
Second that.
We're gonna take up the extension separately then? What do you want to do in one combined motion? Either way. We gotta continue and extend, so. Sorry, we'll extend after.
What are we extending it to?
The public hearing to file a decision to April thirtieth. All three of these.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. So and I'll amend my motion to include that we also will keep the public meeting, extend the opportunity for a public meeting till April thirtieth.
Second the amended motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All right. I think we just have the voting members. Oh, I see Jim's now here. Jim McBane, you with us? Welcome.
Yep.
Did you hear the motion?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so we'll let Greg vote on this one then. Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So if anyone's here for Kimmon Block, three sixty-nine, three seventy-one Main Street, that will be on for eight. Next, from Attorney Brian McGrail also dated today, February twenty-second, New Creek LLC at ten Broadway. Case number twenty-three dash thirty-nine through forty-two. Also requesting that we continue this matter to March eighth and that they're in the process of revising their plans. And also confirming that the applicant is agreeing to extend the time for the board to render and file any decisions through April thirtieth. Two thousand and twenty-three.
So I move that we continue this to March eighth and also approve the extension for approvals until April thirtieth.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, regular voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that too is unanimous. So if anyone's here for ten Broadway, that will be on our March eighth agenda. Finally, from Attorney Brian McGrail also dated today, February twenty-second. Granite Family Trust LLC at three fourteen, three thirty, and three thirty-six Salem Street. Case numbers twenty-three dash forty-three through fifty. Requesting three things. That we continue this meeting until March eighth and that they're still in the process of revising plans and providing additional information to the Wakefield Traffic Advisory Committee. They are also agreeing to extend the time for the board to render and file any decisions through April thirtieth. And they would also respectfully request that the board appoint board member Jim McBane to review the revised plans with the project architect. Perhaps in in advance of that next meeting.
So I'm happy to make a motion, but before I do that, Mr. Hatfield, could I ask Mr. McBane if he's willing to do this?
Of course, I will help you out.
Okay. So first, I I make a motion that we appoint Jim as the designee from the zoning board to work with this group in regards to plans and site and things like that. And secondly, I move that we continue the hearing to March eighth with the extension of time till April thirtieth.
I second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Same voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. And if anyone's here for Granite Family Trust LLC, that will be on our March each agenda. Which takes care of three of the larger continued hearings we had on our agenda this evening, which brings us to our final continued hearing. We also have two other matters after that, but given the shortened agenda, we've taken some of the other matters up front in previous meetings, but where there were only left with one. Why don't we just go in order? Twenty-three dash fifty-one Dana Rodriguez at three seventy-seven Salem Street. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record Attorney Brian McGrail, and I did send you a late letter requesting continuance on this. We're not ready to move forward. You probably received it about ten minutes ago.
Oh.
I thought we wouldn't be, but we're not. So I apologize for the late notice. It should be on your email.
I see it now. Okay, so you're requesting to continue. Let me just see the letter here. To March eighth as well?
Yes, and there's no need for an extension on this because it's a special permit.
Okay.
So you have the board is there's no no deadline issues.
Okay, so board members. There's a request to continue this matter to March eighth. Someone care to make a motion to approve that?
I move that we approve this to March eighth.
Second that.
All right, continue. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Our regular voting members, Chip? Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so three seventy-seven Main Street will also be on our March eighth agenda. Just Gail, I'm printing that letter at home here and I'll put it in the file. Okay.
Zoom zoom.
All right. Well, Brian, as long as your mic is unmuted. We have under other matters, two hundred to four hundred Quanapow Parkway. And some requested modifications. Correct. Matters with us? Yes. And perhaps others, yeah. May I proceed on that, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the for the for the record Attorney Brian McGrail here for the applicant. With me tonight is Matt D'Amico is back. You can see Matt. I think he's grown a mustache since the last time he saw him. So it's good for Matt to be back. Also, our team members, Nick Delacova from Allen and Major, Site Civil. Allison Desbonne is our landscape architect from Copley Wolf. And Steph Thiel is here from Cube Three along with Chris Poles from Cube Three. So they'll all probably participate in presenting tonight. And we really, I think tonight it's somewhat of a testament and not a surprise that Cube that C C and F is back here. As you recognized, I think through the hearing process, they're extremely thorough, professional, the way they go about things. And what they've been working on is putting together their building permit plans to get ready to submit to the building department. And as the board is knows from the past, that when you go from permitting plans to building permit plans, there's certain things that pop up that require modifications. Think these are all minor. That's my opinion, but for you to decide. Some of them, I was even surprised they're so small that they that C C and F wanted to present them, to be honest with you, but that's how thorough and detailed they are. I thought it it might be helpful and maybe a good idea before we proceed with that for Matt to maybe give the board an update on where they are with the project and timing as far as what the plans are for demolition and to get the project underway. So Matt, if you could do that before I get into the modification aspect of it.
Sure, that sounds good. Thanks for having us tonight. Just to get into the schedule a little bit, so beginning next month, we have, we'll begin abating the existing building on site. That's about a two-month process. And then beginning in April, we'll be removing utilities from the existing building, starting to put up a site fence with demo starting shortly thereafter. Demo will continue throughout the summer and into around Labor Day. And you know, that's 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 the work that we were contemplating for now. But in terms of the building permit process. You know, the building department has a third party reviewer who has already begun to look at our the plans for the project in in review for code 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 aspects and whatnot. So that process is already underway. And you know, once we hopefully get these minor modifications approved, we would look to go to the building department and file for a building permit application.
Yeah, and as the board is aware, I think we talked about it. We've already had a meeting with the chair, your chair, and all applicable town officials as relate as it relates to a construction management plan, which is extremely thorough. And we have requirement prior to a building permit to getting that approved by the chair and or, you know, whoever he designates. So we plan on being back at one of the next couple of meetings to present that to the entire board. So your board is familiar with what our construction management plan is. We have not forgot about that requirement, obviously, and and so we will be back before the board to present that in some detail, but not tonight.
Question. Are we, is the permitting going to be done on a three-section basis, or is that just the construction?
So in terms of the permitting?
Yeah.
There will be three separate building permits and one set of plans.
Okay, just so I know what's coming my way. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So with that said, one of the items that we wanted to talk, we have a PowerPoint presentation for the modifications as it relates to the projects, but one of the modification items that we wanted to discuss with the board tonight relates to a condition. If I may share my screen, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So this is the decision of your board, which has been duly recorded at the Registry of Deeds that the board is obviously familiar with, but the relevant parts of this go to the conditions, which I'm gonna get through the seventeen page. Here we are on page nine. In this, under one, I just want to remind the board that the board retained jurisdiction and has authority to approve administratively minor amendments to the decision that don't materially alter the terms of the decision. And obviously, if it's a if you determine some material change, then it requires a hearing, but we're hoping that what we present to you, that you determine that they're minor amendments. As far as a minor amendment to the decision, as I mentioned, condition number seven is a construction management plan, which we're we're pretty much there and we will be presenting in some detail. We wanted to talk to you about condition number four. Which states that prior to applying for building permit, that we have to submit to the board a property management and operations plan to be complied with. And including the building systems, maintenance, exteriors. This all deals with maintenance requirements, not only of our project, but of the adjacent town property in the public pathway that's going on our property. And we would respectfully request a minor modification to change the requirement for this condition to be rather than a building permit, to be prior to the first occupancy permit. Because in meeting with the town officials on the on the construction management plan, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts on this, and I think it's gonna be better suited to make the make a decision on the requirements and content of the O and M plan. As the project gets more constructed and in in building permit plans are approved and we move forward, not to not to do this process prior to the application for a building permit. So that's the first item that I would request that the board consider. Okay.
Mr. Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I think this makes a ton of sense. Quite frankly, you know, they may not know what fire alarm system they're using and what maintenance is needed for that on a yearly basis at this point, or even, you know, with the plans and discussions, so. It I I think before the first any occupants, and I'd say it should be before any temporary or permanent occupancy permit.
Okay. Yeah, it makes sense to me. And and they have stated that they plan on doing multiple occupancies. Right, it'll be a phased development, which I think has been discussed before, but yeah, they'd be it'd be before the first one. Because potentially people are living in them in that first phase while they're developing the the rest of the.
Right, which is fine, but
Yeah.
Their systems are gonna be the same. They're gonna know everything.
By then.
For for this, once they get to that stage.
Agreed. So I'm fine with this. Anyone else from the board? Have another opinion? Are we good with this one?
I'm good.
All right. So we'll we'll vote on them later, Brian, I guess.
That's fine.
But this this one seems fine.
Okay, thank you. Chris, can you, if you could, take the screen and and put the PowerPoint up?
Great. So what we've done is is typical of cabinet Forbes is it's it's an extremely organized presentation on on what the changes are, so the board can see them side by side. We can discuss them. And and then you can make some decisions on these. So if you could go to the next page. So I think I've given my introduction, again, a very thorough presentation, and Nick Delacova will present the start with the proposed civil modifications. Allison will deal with landscape, and then Chris will deal with architecture, and then we're happy, you know, as we go along, I'm sure you will not hesitate to interject if there's any questions as we proceed. So let's let me hand it over to Nick.
Quick, quick, quick question, Mr. Chairman. Does it make sense to vote on each of these three areas individually? So we don't lose track or?
I I wouldn't vote until you hear them all. You can vote on them individually, but if they have changed, if as a whole, in the aggregate, they changed the project, you wouldn't want to approve them.
Oh, right. Okay, all right. I got you.
Right. Okay, Nick, it's all yours to start.
All right, thank you. Again, for the record, Nick Delacavo with Allen and Major Associates. Good to be back. And again, feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions as I go through this. My section's pretty short. So it shouldn't take very long. So on the left here is what was a previously approved, and on the right is what is currently proposed. We're looking at the northern side of the parkway closer to Lowell Street. You can see on the left, there are seven parallel parking spaces adjacent to the parkway. With the sidewalk and a retaining wall up near the surface lot. What we've done is relocate those parallel spaces into the neighborhood driveway to get them a little bit closer proximity to each of the buildings. They're pretty far away being on the parkway where they're shown. And not not very functional. So by eliminating those spaces at that location and moving them in interior to the site, we also eliminated the sidewalk. Which opened up the green space that you see on the right side of the the screen. And using that green space, we were able to grade down from the from the surface lot down to the parkway and eliminate the retaining wall. We also adjusted the walkway towards the top of the page on on each of the drawings. That walkway leads down to the dog park behind building three, adjacent to the highway. We essentially just modified the shape of it slightly and eliminated the stairs. It's an accessible walkway. And there really, there was no need for the stairs. Very questions on that sheet before I move to the next one?
So where did those seven spaces go?
I I was just gonna say, I assume you're gonna show us another sheet to show where those seven spaces went, so.
Right? Yeah, so they got they got pushed into the neighborhood driveway. We I don't have a slide for that. I can probably pull up the the plans that we submitted to the board. That will be helpful.
So what do you mean by neighborhood driveway? Just refresh our memory.
The neighborhood driveway that runs between all the buildings. Sorry, the it's the driveway that passes between buildings one, two, and three.
So what did you have to change to add seven spaces to that area?
We reduced the size of some of the landscaped islands and also eliminated, I believe, two or three landscaped islands.
Okay, so we'll see that on a landscaping update?
It doesn't sound like they've got it.
Well, we're gonna get landscape updates from Allison, right?
Yes, Allison, we presented the landscape updates. I'm not sure if she has those specifically called out on her drawings or on her slides. But I can pull up, as we move forward, we can come back to this, and I can pull up the approved plans as well as the plans we recently submitted and point out the locations of where those spaces were moved.
They're on the plans that were recently submitted?
Correct.
Okay.
So Chris, if you, do you mind going to the next slide? So these are some EV charging stations that were added to the development site. On the left again is what was previously approved, and on the right is what's currently proposed. On the left side, this is in front of the southern courtyard of building three. You can see the locust plan on the top right of the slide with the shaded red box. Essentially, those four spaces, they were just converted into EV charging stations. We'll be putting two dual chargers to supply each of those four spaces with charging. Similarly, the two pictures on the bottom, those are in front of building two just below the northern courtyard of building three. We converted four spaces there to EV chargers. Three of them are standard spaces and one is an accessible space. Next slide, Chris.
So a question on those, though.
Sure.
Remind me, we were simply because it was so long ago, just on the the parking count, if we're gonna put or reserve for EV-only signs there, are we effectively reducing or or looking for an increased variance? I I just don't remember.
Yeah, so there was no variance. We were meeting the parking requirement on the approved plans. We had the same number of spaces proposed that were required, so there's no excess in parking. Currently, which it's towards the end of my presentation, we're actually adding ten additional spaces inside the garage. So we'll have a surplus or we're proposing a surplus of ten spaces.
Okay, so you so even if you say these reduce it, reduce by eight because they're EV charging only, there'd still be a surplus of two, at least from what was.
Yeah, we found we found ten new spaces in the parking garage.
Okay, okay.
Which is great.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
I just also want to kind of point out here, since we're looking for an example of of what that landscape change would look like. If you look at the the bottom two pictures here or plans, on the left-hand side and the currently approved left bottom left, you can see between the five and the seven, like if you can kind of point that out on your screen. Yeah. That's one of the landscape. That's one of the landscape islands, if you look on the right, that's, that's reduced by one space. So that's how we were able to create more green space on, you know, on the parkway. Um, was by making some moves like that, and also in addition to that, we were able to find, find more room in the garage. Um, when we actually, you know, fully drew out the garage, um, that kind of gave us more flexibility.
Okay.
Anything else on these charging stations?
Not for me.
Okay.
Seems fine, welcome, welcome the fact that we were adding them, so that's good.
Christopher, yep, thank you. Um, okay, and so these are transformers around the site. Based on further coordination that we've had with the electrical engineer, uh, on the development team. Uh, we need to add trans closures near each of these transformers for each of the buildings, and so the switch. In transformer locations that were previously approved on the left side. The locations of these have not changed, they're sa- they're in the same general location, all we've done is add a trans closure. Uh, to each of them, and so, I, I'm not an expert on. The electrical aspect of this, my understanding is the trans closure looks pretty similar to a transformer, uh, it's probably about half the size. And so you can see on the top left, uh, that is. The driveway entrance from, uh, the north app side of the site. And we had a switch and a transformer, you look on the right side, top right. Uh, same thing, switch transformer, and we added the little box that shows the trans closure. Bottom left is on the Lowell Street side, uh, of our driveway entrance. The transformer and switches, same general location, we've just added trans closure shown on the bottom right picture, uh, after each of the transformers.
And the dots are ballards or something, it looks like maybe there's more of them now than before. To protect the enclosures and everything, so, which seems fine, but looks like there's more of them, yep.
Yeah, they're all, all the ballards are five foot on center, uh, we've ran this by Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light. Uh, and it, they're meeting all their requirements, getting the, the six foot clearance in the front, four feet on the sides. Um, so we have presented this to them and, uh, my understanding is that they have no issue with the trans closures. Next slide, Chris. So similar story here, this is, uh, on the southwest corner of building three, top left picture. Uh, we had the approved location of the transformer, the top right shows the same location of the transformer, but again, just with the added trans closure. After it. We have added, uh, behind building three next to the loading zone, uh, adjacent to the highway. We've added a, uh, backup gas generator in that location, again, based on further coordination with. Um, some of the MEP engineers. It'll be a gas generated service from the building, uh, and the secondaries will run back to each of the electrical rooms.
Is this just for emergency services?
Chris, do you know the answer to that?
The, the generator is, is for standby only, so it, it provides the, provides electricity that, uh, the elevators in building three during a power outage. That's its only purpose.
So it, it doesn't run the, it doesn't run, uh, horns and lights and all of that sort of stuff? For fire department?
I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, you've got a generator, it seems to me you'd put all the emergency systems on it as opposed to be running off some sort of battery.
Chris, are you muted?
Looks like he is.
There you go, sorry, I was muted on my computer and not on my phone, um. So the life safety is not required to be on generator for these type of buildings, that would be something that would be for high-rise, so. Um, right now, all of the life safety is battery backup. And all the generators only, uh, handling any of the, um, standby power.
All right, you're right to have that opportunity.
So my, my questions tend to be. That, you know, we now have ballards all over the place, we have. Generators stuck in the middle of grass eye with ballards all over, what does this look like? In relation to where it is on the building, where it is on parking? Does the best locations for them, or is it the easiest, most convenient ones? I've never even heard what a trans closure is, we have no picture of what it's gonna look like.
Um. Well, I'll add for, for the generator, at least, the location, uh, it honestly probably couldn't be further away from the electrical rooms, but it's. I think it's the, um, most aesthetically pleasing place, it's behind building three, it's near the loading zone. Uh, there are no parking spaces near it, uh, aside from the loading zone.
We don't even know how big it's gonna be. We have no specs on it, I mean, this thing could be.
No, so that, that generator pad, uh, is, is shown, it's accurate. Uh, so it's not very large. I don't know.
Your definition of not very large and my definition of might not very large, maybe two very different things.
Based on that, I would say it's probably about a five by eight pad, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are being sized per the requirements of the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Districts, there's not a lot we can do about that. I think these locations are what we, what we planned through the kind of iterative process we have had with the CBA last time, so none of these really changed. Um, the ballards there are just meeting the specifications that are required by national grid, which is what the municipal gas and light district follows. Um, so there's not really a lot of leeway here in, in terms of what we can do.
Right, but there is.
And is what?
To us the difference of nothing and what we're getting, and all we have is a little diagram, we don't have a picture of what it is. We don't have dimensions. And, and also. As far as I'm concerned, if you look at the top, what the change in that landscaping between one thing with. Five ballards and two things with. Fifteen ballards is very different. Very different.
Well, I, so I think there is some flexibility with where that trans closure goes, as long as it stays near that transformer. I mean, we can put it down right next to the transformer, that way there's no ballards up near the parking. If that's preferred, but we, it's our understanding that we do need a trans closure near that transformer.
What is a trans closure?
So, Chris, I don't know if you know better than me, I'll take a stab at it, my understanding is, it's the secondaries that come out of. The transformer, they run into the trans closure and they go from a copper to, I believe it's aluminum. Uh, essentially taking, I, again, I, I'm not exactly sure, but it's. It's an above-ground unit, it'll look similar to a transformer. Uh, but again, it's about half the size, if not smaller.
So how, I mean, can these things, can a trans closure be buried or not?
I don't believe it can be.
It's a, it's a smaller version of a transformer box, um, like Nick mentioned, it's about half the size of it. Um. And it just basically reduces the, um, it's similar to like a sub panel from the transformer itself. Before you get into the building. I agree with Nick, I mean, we probably can locate it a little.
Doesn't have to be fifteen feet away from the transformer, or can it be right up next to it?
There are certain clearances typically that it needs to be set away from the transformer. Um, but we can look into that and get it closer to it and put it further down near the parkway.
And I'm just wondering why did the location of the ballads have to change as well? Because of the trans closure, or they just weren't right in the first approved style?
Yeah, the first top left corner, uh, picture, the ballards don't protect the transformer from oncoming traffic. From the parkway.
Yeah, I've just never seen ballards that far away from a transformer before. You know, they're usually right up on the corners of them.
There are clearance distances, so national grid requires, and same with Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light. Six feet minimum on the front, four foot minimum on the sides.
But that looks like, if I was to scale it, that looks like a lot larger, longer than six feet.
Are you talking about the top left picture?
No, I'm talking about the, the one you're proposing.
Okay, well, we can double check it.
I would just put those ballards to the minimum requirement that they need to be.
Sure, that's not a problem.
They, they look like they're, and again, there's no scale here, so. It's difficult to understand it really, and no dimensions.
Chip, it seems to be by Google, basically, a secondary bus enclosure, so it's a bunch of bus bars. Where, where basically, it, it, you might say it's almost like, uh, um, uh. Well, it's a bus bar system, basically.
Okay.
So it's just a shell where they make connections on a bus bar. And make the transition as they, as they noted, basically, and as far as the size, it varies, of course, with. The amount of juice you're running through it.
Right. And then I guess the question would be is what are we doing landscaping-wise to hide these things now that there are two of them rather than one? Has there been any changes made to that?
Allison, do you wanna touch on that? I don't know if it's in any of your slides or not specifically.
May not have been addressed.
Yeah, it's not in any of the slides that I have, unfortunately, um. But we typically do more heavier screening planting around the, the transformers and trans closures, um, obviously. You know, agreeing to the, the code and whatnot with what those will be, but, um. But I'll need to double check on what we have, I do think we have our standard planting in those areas, which, um, kind of gives us the free range, we can do shrubs.
Okay, Greg, did, were you trying to interject with a comment or question as well? I think there were multiple people trying to talk.
Yeah, it's just, I mean.
I'm, I'm fine at this point, it might come back up again, but. Okay.
I, I might say, Dave, just on the planting side, this little cabinet. Is only got a door on one side and unlike the transformer, basically, it hasn't got any fins to dissipate heat, so. Um, you probably can plant fairly closely to this cabinet.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's some open questions here, some, maybe some takeaways and follow-ups, so. I think. Questions have been, have been noted, Matt, um, Brian, others?
We hear you, okay, let's keep moving.
All right, next slide, Chris, please.
Is this supposed to be the quick section, right? See, you jinxed yourself.
It might still be the quick section, we don't know.
Uh, well. In totality, these may end up not being minor then, let's see. Okay, let's keep going.
Um, okay, so here, we're talking setbacks. Uh, we've got the front setback on the left, side setback on, in the middle, rear setback on the right. The red line shows the previously approved buildings, the black shaded is what's currently proposed. For the front setback, building two, this is towards the lakeside, uh, and Lowell Street side of the parkway. We, there's a jog, uh, slight jog in the building near this jog in the property line. Uh, and the setback went from fifty-two point three to forty-seven point five. I'll note that the average setback from the lake for buildings one and two. Actually increased, the buildings were pulled back further away from the lake by about a foot. Side setback, the middle picture, building three. This is on the southwest corner, uh, negligible, negligible change went from sixty point three. Feet to sixty point nine, actually increased slightly. And then the rear setback, um, my picture's in the way. Rear setback to the right, this is on the northwest corner of building three. Went from fifty-five point six down to fifty-two point seven. Each of the setbacks for all the buildings, uh, do meet the minimum requirements, Chris, if you don't mind going to the next page?
Yeah, I, I can touch on this, they, they, you can look on the left table, uh, th- these buildings. It, um, it's not even close, um, so, you know, these, these setback changes, it, as it, as it been laid out at the minimus, but they. The setbacks blew away the requirements in the, uh, in the zoning, and they still meet it by far, not even close, so there was never. There was never dimensional relief, um, that was, uh, was needed, and there still isn't. Um, so it's not having any, any effect that brings us into non-compliance or even close to non-compliance for setback purposes.
And between these two zoning tables, previously approved on the left, proposed on the right. The only change to the zoning tables for all the requirements were for these setbacks, which are the numbers boxed in orange. Everything else remained, uh, exactly the same. Down below is the off-street parking summary. We have, uh, the surface count overall is unchanged, again, seven parallel spaces were converted. Into standard nine by eighteen spaces, and then with the addition of ten additional spaces in the garage. That brought our overall count up by ten spaces, uh. To a total of seven hundred and twelve, where seven hundred and two are required.
What's the new garden mean on the new proposed table?
Sure, that's a good question, um, so buildings one and two, uh, are considered garden apartments.
Okay.
In.
Garden, gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, so the setback for the garden is thirty-five feet. It's thirty feet or the height of the building, whichever is greater, the height of the building is thirty-five feet, therefore the setback's thirty-five feet. And I think that wraps it up for civil. Uh, I'll hand it off to Allison, go over some of the landscape updates.
Thanks, Nick, um, so Allison Dabane here with Copley Wolf, I'm gonna bring you through the landscape modifications. Um, so we're gonna go through the building three courtyards, the restaurant patio and the central village green. Um, so starting with the building three passive courtyard, um, we have the previously approved in the bottom left and the pros, proposed blown up on the right. Um, so for the, the modifications made here, we reconfigured the buyer retention areas, um, between. This courtyard and the active courtyard that you'll see in a couple slides, um, and we really consolidated those and made it a more effective. Um, rain garden buyer retention design, um, and in response to that, we did modify the hardscape a bit, as you'll see. Um, and then overall for programming, we added, um, seating, we added lighting. Chargers and a security fence and gate, um, to this area. Um, so the, the buyer retention size on, in this courtyard was previously two thousand square feet, that's twenty-seven hundred now.
And is the fence that's added, a fence typical that you presented other places as well?
It is, it's that, it's an ornamental, um, aluminum fence, kind of picket style that, um. That we have throughout the site, this one's at a five feet.
Oh, I, I gotta look at this, a few days ago, basically, I had both the architecture in the landscape. And, um, one of the comments I made at this location to, uh, in that zoom, in that quick Zoom meeting. Was my problem is that where this patio is moved to is right off the face window area. Of two or three units, and I thought it would be better off if the square footage that's there. Be put in a patio that's more out. In the middle, so it's give some break. So on your walkway in, you come past this patio, but say. On the other side and maybe it's circular or whatever, but still leave enough area basically for. Um, bio retention. But not have a, a gathering space basically right up against somebody's unit. Uh, or s- several units, basically. And maybe it's better to have that gathering space out in the middle as people pass by. Um, that was a comment that I made the other day and I see it, it still hasn't changed or no one's looked at it.
Yeah, so we did discuss that, um, and one of the, the items with our design is um, the, the planting that's in front of that area. And along that, that left edge of the building is a more screen planting. Um, we have proposed tall grasses that. That would stay, you know, up during the winter and provide a really nice screen as well as some more um, deciduous shrubs. In those areas. And this is also our passive courtyard. We're expecting this to be a much kind of quieter area. It's not. We don't have the activities happening like the pool courtyard where there's grilling and things like that as well, so.
But this is still, this is still a gathering area where you're providing seating and the like. And I don't think a few grasses are gonna stop the noise basically from out there that happens. Um, during the spring, summer, whatever time these people are using this. In as, and maybe that it's not programmed area, but people are gonna be coming in, they're gonna sit down out there. Before they go into the unit or they'll come out from the unit and sit there with other people uh, waiting for somebody or whatever else. So. I still see this um, basically as an area. That I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't want to have that sort of activity out there. Now you might say, well. Anybody that's renting that space sees as an activity and I want to be in the middle of it and I want my unit in the middle of it. I just, it doesn't fit my fancy anyway.
Response to Jim, but uh, was this the area that was supposed, that in the approved plan had something like a. Almost like a covered outdoor. Area or, or like a, a step up, stepped up. Outdoor seating area we could work outside or so, it wasn't, am I misremembering either spots or projects?
We, we had some kind of decking here previously. Um, that kind of interfered with the, the bio retention area. We, when we kind of went to further design, it didn't really work with being in the middle of the bio retention area. It goes nice in concept. But you know, what we tried to do here and I think what we tried to spend some time doing is. Create a space that would still work for, you know, it's a private courtyard and they, and they work for our residents. And you know, provide meaningful work from home space if someone wants to sit outside. So that's still, still kind of the intent here.
Time on trying to get something like that in there and now it seems like it was. More for show knowing it wasn't, or not knowing, but. I mean, I, I, as a lawyer, I wouldn't know that it wouldn't interfere with the uh, the buyer attention area, but I would have thought someone would have looked at that beforehand and. Seen that it wouldn't, and now it's just, looks like it's just sort of hardscape. I don't know, it looks like we're going back. Taking a step back from what we had spent. I think we even had subcommittees on, on some of this outdoor space. Not saying it's not a, a minor change and. Can move forward, but it's a little disappointing.
The subcommittee Greg was more on the uh, the village. Which we're gonna get to, really wasn't.
If, if it wasn't in the subcommittee, then I know we specifically talked about this area.
Let's go to the next one, I guess.
Please.
Thanks. Um, so similar to the last side, the previously approved is in the bottom left and on the right is our proposed design. So for the, the pool courtyard here, we. Um, we updated this to be reoriented um, to relate better to the interior programming. So it's really just a configuration of that. Um, not a lot has changed as far as, you know, hardscape to planting layout. Um, but we did add the program features similar to the last one. Um, we have lighting, we have chargers. Um, a security fence and gate in addition to the, the pool um, gate to enter that area. And we've also added a fire feature and grills as amenities. So this one, this one is pretty simple. There's no comments, we can move on. Um, so this is the active lawn courtyard, um. And this relates to the, the buyer retention size um, with the passive courtyard where we're kind of balancing that out between the two and we've. We've increased this one um, quite a bit on, it's on the right-hand side there, so this is. Previously at twenty-two hundred square feet and we're now at thirty-nine hundred square feet. We think this is a great opportunity to, for the, you know, units to look out on. It's going to be a rain garden with some more substantial planting um, surrounding the edges. Um, for the. Program here, we've added, you know, the same things as far as lighting and seating goes. Um, we have a security fence and gate similar to the other areas, um, chargers and we've added grills to this area as well.
So this area reinforces what I said about the first area. There's nobody up against somebody else's unit. Walk in, you have a seating area on the way and you walk into the building. This was, this is more what I would expect in the, in area number two, I mean, number one. And be a little bit different in its layout, but, but the functionality of it would be the same like this.
Yeah, I think for this one and the, the passive one, we do have um, you know, similar planting on both of those sides. So where it does pinch in a little bit towards those. Um, units and the, the private patio, it is the, the screen planting along there, so it's, it's gonna be a similar feel on both of them.
And these slides are just for us, for nobody else, right? These slides aren't being presented to anybody else, right?
No, not at this point. That's why these are, these are, these are before you to decide on. What do you, what do you mean?
I'm not sure what a chair and power is. Just a misspelling. I'm sure that's supposed to say charging. I'm assuming that's a charging power, right?
Yes, charging, so it's a, it's a charging pedestal. You plug in your, your.
Yeah, just a misspelling, that's all.
Um, so this is the restaurant patio. We modified the path and the layout of the hardscape. Um, we wanted to create a more organic feel with the path and it kind of connects and feeds better into the. The existing lakefront path, um, that's, you know, it's kind of off the page here. And for the. On the civils end, Nick was able to rework some of the grading and. Um, we were able to remove, there was a couple retaining walls that was needed along that kind of. Choppy or walkway that we had before, um, that we do not need anymore, so it's, it's more of an open area. Um, you know, we'll have low planting along the front, but it's gonna be a really nice view up to the lake. And I can mention that the patio size is, has stayed the same as the previous. Okay, now, so moving on to the village green here. This is really just uh, an addition of programming. Um, we've added catenary lights. Um, that won't interfere with the, the fire access lane. They're kind of on either side of the. Attached to the buildings. Um, we've added trash receptacles. We've added bike racks, um, kind of close to that community path, and we've also added some of the charging stations out here as well. And we've maintained that access for the, the fire line as well.
And the charging power here is available for the public.
That's correct, yep.
Um, one question, what are these grills? Are they propane or are they gonna be get uh, direct fed gas?
Those will be gas.
Direct fed gas, alright, thanks.
Yeah, I think G O D approved that, but not for the buildings, right? But I think, I seem to recall that discussion, yeah.
If there's no questions on this, that wraps.
How, I see added bike racks, but I don't see. Like how big or how many there for stations, it's just a dot that I see.
So there's three in that location, three racks which hold six bikes, um, and then. If you are at the kind of more north end of the courtyard, um, we have along the street a couple more as well. That I think are covered up by one of the labels. I'll pass it over to Chris now for the architecture section.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Uh, again, Chris Paul with Q three. I'm gonna go through some of the uh, minor changes from the architecture standpoint. Um, just to reorient everyone again, the overall site plan here. Um, we leave it all, labeled all the buildings, um, building one on bottom left, building two. On bottom right, they're both located along the lake. And then building three, um. Across the center, uh, neighborhood street is adjacent to the highway. Again, to. Uh, reiterate the fact that um, the approved building material palette has not changed. Um, we just wanted to um, bring these up again to show you. Uh, what was previously approved and they all remain consistent, that's what you've already seen.
So if nothing's changed, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you, Chris. So why is the date of this page February twenty-second if nothing's changed? And I, and I gotta know that, I gotta tell you all too, the plans you sent us. Like there are fifteen or twenty sheets for all these and they're all dated today. But they don't clearly show all the changes you're presenting tonight, right? They're just updated plans. There aren't dotted lines around the changes or shading or colors. It's, it's kind of hard to go through these full plans and, and see the changes you're all presenting tonight. Right? It's every sheet has a new date on it, which implies everything is new or every sheet's been touched. So we're gonna need obviously this presentation. Because it, it backs up what, what we've gotten ahead of time with these plans. And second, if nothing's changed on here, why is there a new date on it? Why doesn't it say July twenty-twenty-two or whenever we approved the last one? Well, I can answer that. So the, the plans that were submitted, those are plans that will go into the building set. So what happens is when, I think when Jim reviews them with the building inspector. They're gonna look at the board of appeals plans and then they're gonna look at the building plans to make sure they're consistent. So our intent was those. Those plans don't highlight the changes because they're gonna be the building permit plan, so they don't highlight them. They reflect the changes, but they don't highlight them. The purpose of this presentation tonight is to highlight them. And it would be anticipated that this would, if you were to approve these, this would be. Attached to your correspondence to the building department. Not what you got earlier, but this, this presentation itself. Cause it clearly delineates every change and that way it allows Ben and Jim. To reconcile those with the plans to make sure that they're incorporated. Um, and they will be, and they will be different from the plans that were approved by your board. As far as this sheet goes. I had the exact comment you did, Mr. Chair, because when we went through this and. And you know, I said, do we really want to include a sheet that nothing's changed, but. Um, when we, when we went through these plans with uh, the designated board member, Mr. McBain. The shading, sometimes when you look at these as you go through the architecture and you compare it to them with the approved plans. The shading, it, it's just, it, they're not exact because you have different printers and different computers. So we just thought it'll be, it, it would be important to reiterate for the record as part of this package. That materials have not changed. And that's why we put that note on there. We could certainly take it out, but we thought it was appropriate to, to just document it. If somebody's looking at the pictures, they're gonna say, oh, is that a different shade of gray or is that a different shade of white than was on the original? So we just wanted to document it in a sheet and say, this is the approved building material palette, no proposed changes. And that's what was approved. So that was the purpose. If you don't think it's appropriate, we can certainly change it, but that was our thought process in, in doing this. Okay, right, right, okay. I mean, I, I, and I had the same comment that you did. I, I said to the team, I said, I, I think maybe we should take this out. But I think Jim, you can maybe talk about that because if you remember, it was like kinda. You know, you were looking at some of the plans going, did you change that color? Did you, you know, it was a little bit different and we just wanted to document it, then nothing changed.
You know, a, a data aside for a minute, I think it's good. That it's clearly noted upfront that no finishes or colors have changed. Uh, whether there should have been a different date here, being the original date or not. Is, um, you know, it's up in the eyes of the, the holder, but. I, I think it was, I, I had similar sort of questions. But I get, kept on getting flipped back to, we're not changing anything, that's why we got this key up front. So, um, and you'll see that it does appear that like some things have changed, but. To the point of printers and other things. Um, the stuff that was done, this is the explanation I got, basically, the stuff that was done. Originally in presentation to us. Um, was. Not just done by a different printer, but by a different process. And they don't have, I guess, access to it. So the way things have come out, they basically moved on like. Like what we're discussing right now when this whole thing, it's, we're getting to, they're getting to a point where they're honing. The overall planning, which has had some effect on basically what they've shown us. Massing wise, it's pretty much the same. There are some things you're gonna see that have changed the massing a little bit. But not in dramatic ways. I, I, I will just, let's just move on.
Okay, well, then I will just close with, okay, so we'll obviously need a copy of the presentation. And secondly, what, what the team is asserting here that you've given us fully updated plans that are not annotated in any way, Brian. And I understand your explanation for that. But you're asserting that the only changes on those plans from what we approved. Are the things that are being called out on this presentation slide and that every other detail on all of those slides is exactly what we approved before. And Jim, I guess it's left to you to do the comparison. Because I can tell you with all honesty, I did not go through every one of these pages and compare it to what we approved. We were relying on you to annotate what the changes are and you're showing us on slides with excerpts from pages, but not the full page. Right? We've seen that before with other projects where we see redlined versions of it. So we can clearly see what has changed on the plans we approved. So. I'll, I'll say, I've said my piece. I just, there's a lot going on here and I'm just, I gotta wrap my head around it.
So Dave, even before Brian responds, I, I, I'm with you and. But I think, at least from what they said earlier, not every change is, is definitely in here and that was gonna be my question at the end. Because we were already told that the seven parking spots. Or the reduced. Islands, we, we said, you know, someone said, hey, there's an example of one. In a different slide, but they weren't all shown in here, so. That le- leaves a question to me that are, are we really being shown every single, not, not anything nefarious, just, you know. Being left out because, you know, it just got overlooked.
Or it's on the full set of plans we have, just not in those.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly.
Highlighted in the presentation. Okay. Enough said, sorry, Chris, didn't, kinda.
No, no, I, I completely understand and I apologize.
No worries, let's, let's.
So as Jim mentioned, we had met with him a few times before I move on. Um, we did make some, some adjustments based on his recommendations. Um, to make it a little bit more clear. Material wise, like he had mentioned as well, we have two different programs, so. There are slight. Color differences between the two. Um, again, that's why we put this up here, because we're not trying to. Push something past you. We want to show you and be true to the materials that we use. They just appear differently between the two elevations. Um, ever so slightly. Um, so again, going into this building one, um, on the bottom left-hand side. Um, so we're gonna show you the building material palette. Again, this is the. Um, so we're gonna show you the building material palette. Again, this is the, there's no changes to the materials. Uh, we've taken the new. New elevation and just shown you the locations where they were before. Um. And getting into the elevation themselves. So on this plan, this is the east elevation facing the lake. Um, starting on the left-hand side is the restaurant. Um. Material wise, the material has not changed. We've adjusted the windows and added a door in. Um, continuing down that path, massing wise, we're not changing anything holistically across the entire elevation. Um, we have made some small modifications to window locations or door locations based on. What is happening within the building and as things progressed. Um. The area that um, we discussed with Jim. As the um. Largest alteration here is on the right-hand side over the amenity space. You can see there was a previously. Approved, the previously approved elevation had a um, a step back on the right-hand side. That was where the rooftop was located. Um, when going through the the planning process, we ended up moving the roof deck to the lake side of the building. Um. It's a little bit difficult to see here, but the step back, it actually reduces the size of the building from the lake elevation. And as you're walking across the um, walking down the lake. Um, I would say the rest of that, we've kept the storefront. So from a change standpoint, this keeps the intent, the massing. Um, and the character of the building. Um. And except for that one small area. Going to the opposite side of the building. Um, again, going from left to right, uh, the left-hand side is where that roof deck used to be on the proposed. Um, again, it's located on the opposite elevation of this. Um, to give more uh, activity to the lake. Everything else across this elevation, massing and overall approach is pretty similar to what was done before. There are some window modifications. Um, you will see this is kind of one of those elevations where it gives you an example of the color differences between the two. Ever so slightly, the materials have not changed, it's just the way that the um. Two different pro um. Programs render the the materials. Um. On the right-hand side of the restaurant, the storefront has changed slightly. We've added in. The main entry door here, um, as well as provided some adjustments. Um, where we have trash and access into the restaurant itself, that's changed the the elevation. Net directly adjacent to the the restaurant here. Um, going on to the end elevation, the south side, which is closest to North Avenue. Um, the lower is the previously approved elevation. And the upper is the proposed. Again, we've adjusted some of the storefront windows here. Um, and modified some of the rear elevation. Where the wood paneling is located, um, we've adjusted some of those window locations based on the residential units that are in there. And going to the opposite side of that, again, this is where the. What I talked about in the first slide where we have adjusted the roof top deck. Again, you would see that in the forefront here on the lower plan. We've actually adjusted that and located on the left-hand side from the proposed elevation. And again, this is overlooking the lakefront. Um. We thought there was a better approach and and worked better with what was happening inside of the building as well as. Um, changing the mass along that lake. I don't know if we want to pause or if we.
Has the crown molding, has your approach to the crown molding on top of the building changed all on all elevations?
Uh, it's not, it has not. Um, I can go back.
Certainly has on this, I mean. It certainly has on this, your roof line here. And your, you know, your roof line on the approved versus the roof line on the proposed is dramatically different.
Yeah, it's a it's a little hard to to show in the in the two dimension. I mean, yes, we we did remove the.
And if you go back, and if you go back to any of the others. That that cornice has changed. The cornice here has changed. The roofs on. The proposed versus the roofs on the previously approved are very different in size, shape and nature. Unless I'm reading it all wrong.
So I think so these roofs here over the wood.
Yeah, that doesn't equal what's proposed.
So they've slightly changed in size based on what's happening.
Okay, so I asked my question, my question was, has your approach changed in all the roof lines? And slightly or not, the answer is yes.
I think I would. Yes, they've changed slightly. We're keeping the intent of the angled roof at these locations. We've just. Moved them slightly to accommodate what's happening.
You're, I think your definition of slightly and my definition of slightly are probably a little different. Um, you're trying to put all these changes, which is a whole cast of character. On these elevations as minor modifications. I think you've changed the look. Dramatically of these buildings. I'm not saying it's good, bad or indifferent. I just, you know, when you, everybody says, oh, there's just been a couple of windows. Oh, there's just a couple of doors. I think you guys have changed a lot. My humble opinion. And if this is just one of three buildings that we're gonna be looking at all of this again. I think we just, like somebody said, we need to look at all of this in the aggregate. And again, if this was what was proposed. And if this was what was presented to us originally. There'd probably be no issue with it. So I have to keep that in mind as well. But let's let's not try to downplay the amount of changes there are, please. Because you can go through every single elevation and find significant changes. In all the windows, all the doors, all the roof lines.
Okay. I I think we're keeping the the mass and intent and and adjusting the windows. I mean, obviously, there's there's movement between them as well as the. The demising walls and how what happens within the building and things shift ever so slightly. Again, I'm saying slightly because. It's not as if we're changing colors and massing. Or removing things or removing them and and within the the footprint.
Moving windows, we're used to seeing, but changing cornice lines. What's the re, you know, what 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 drove that?
Chris, can you, can you blow this up a little bit, Chris? Can you zoom in?
Right.
Uh. Not easily.
No, you can't just blow it up? No?
Yeah.
Okay.
So cornice wise, again, the details are not different with the the massing of the 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 wood. Masses. They. Still angle back, the roof cornices are exactly the same. That's in the details that are shown in the in the. The special permit package that we provided. The the area that changed is the cornice along the amenity space on this elevation would be the left-hand side. And we adjusted that based on the fact that we had, they moved the location of the roof deck.
Talk about that.
What? What is the reason again for, I mean, that seems to make. Very little sense to me. It was as. I know you said so it faces the lake. I mean, part of it already did face the lake. Now it doesn't have any step back really, whereas that was sort of a feature of that side of the building. I I could be wrong, but I'm assuming the other side of that village will not have a step back either uh anymore. Um. But. It it just, yeah, I mean, that seems to be.
Yeah, like I, yeah, I'm with you, Greg. I I think that's a very big difference.
And I. Opinion wise, it could be, you know, I don't like it, whether it's a lot of minor change, it just seems to. There's a lot less interest there now. There is no step back. And then actually, a second question that's probably. Quickly answered, on the. Right side of the bridge, those balconies, the new balconies. So I guess I'll start with with the other way. And it might just be because of the picture. In the proposed elevation, are they recessed balconies and were they before? I just can't tell and I don't, I just don't remember.
Yeah, they're they were all recessed in that those locations.
And so they're still the same.
They're they're slightly. The plan's slightly different. You can see with the two plans. Some of them have like wing walls on either side and they're partially recessed. That's the same approach. That's why we put the plans on. Just so you could see that.
Okay.
That we kept those the same.
And how much bigger is the opening in between the two buildings? In the. Approved versus the proposed?
I don't think there's any difference. This is a, the plans were separated because of the angle of the building. But that that opening is still the same.
So the the previously opposed elevation is at a different angle than the proposed elevation? And not to the same scale?
Um, so. They're at the same angle. They. The previous. Approved elevation. Um. There were some issues with the way that the model presented it, so the proposed elevation is what is actually happening. Um, the previous one extended some of the areas based on the angle that the elevation was shown.
Man, if you.
I don't know how to.
Yeah.
So what?
If you really take the time to look at this facade. There's a lot of changes on here, windows, balconies.
It's extremely different. Not that it, yeah, I agree with you.
I mean, if you step back and, you know, yeah, it has this. Very similar look and feel, right? From an overall massing in a macro way. But when you really look at the individual, there's a lot of changes on this one facade. Right? And then you flip to the other side and there's more changes there and we haven't even got to the other buildings yet. I suspect there's more of the same. Sorry, who else had a comment?
No, I was just gonna ask what the dimension was when we approved it, what the dimension is now when that opened.
It definitely does look different. I don't know why it would represent differently based on an angle or something. And I'm and I'm, so I started looking above it. I see window, window, single window, double window balcony, double window. And up above, it's double window balcony, double window. So I don't know what happened, right? And it's just the windows, the white windows aside of that bridge look different. And so the opening of the bridge looks different. I don't know.
My major problem with all this is. I understand coming back with modifications because of, you know, engineering, we're looking to go for a building permit set now. But when this changes to things like the. The, just take the roof deck, for instance, I think it's, you know, we've mentioned it before that, oh, we thought it played better this way. Well, we had a year of hearings and we worked through it quite a bit. So I think the board and whatever group, you know, everyone that that had an opportunity to speak on this. Understood what we were approving at that point. And that's the way we approved it, not simply because to to have it come back. You know, I I don't know, six months to a year later and say, ah, you know what? We thought it, we like it better this way now, so we want you to approve it. I understand the things, you know, we're looking to, the walls inside didn't fit, the units had to change or, you know, things like that, but simply because. You know what? We didn't like what we what we what we presented to you over a year, it just. Doesn't play right to me.
Chris, isn't it not the case that that entire amenity area didn't work structurally and we have like six-foot ceilings inside those spaces because of the way it was laid out? I I I remember the first time we ever looked at changing that space. That was, that was the reason we had that conversation.
Yeah, there's some of some of that also. Um. Structurally, it didn't, it didn't work. Um, what was previously shown. Um. So that was part of it as well throughout the process. Um. But it's also, you know, just making the adjustments with what was. Showed there. Um, so and what was working within inside of the the building and and the rest of the space outside as well. Um, I understand that. This is something that had been previously approved and honestly. Just trying to make it better as a whole across the board from a. A building use standpoint and what, how people are gonna um. Interact with it. And I guess that it's it's a change. Um, we were just trying to make the building better.
In this. You should have made the building better when you first presented it to us.
I would agree. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for that, but um. I. Can only work with what I have now, so.
Why don't we keep going so we see the totality of this and then we can. Try to digest it all and see where we think it needs to go.
So we're going to. Building two. Um, it's adjacent to building one along the lake again. Here again, building materials, just showing you the locations and again, nothing has changed this. Beside as well. Um. Again, this is similar to. Um. Massing intent. Overall approach of this building. Um. We tried to keep the same intent and character that was shown previously and what has been approved. Um. Again, as I had mentioned, there are some changes with material color, but it is the same material. Um, window patterning, we tried to keep as similar as possible. Um, the roof lines for those wood areas, as you mentioned before, those are all the same details. Um, so cornices haven't changed. Um, I think it's more. Of what you saw on the previous one. Um. Going to the the opposite side of the west elevation along the highway. Again, this is the same facade. Um. Massing, we've made some some small adjustments to where the the wood massing is on the right-hand side of this building. Um. Keeping the details as as much as we could. Um. We've tried to keep the window spacing. And keep that patterning the same. Um, trying to keep the character that that was improved previously.
So on the left and right side, on the right-hand side, there's like two shaded gray boxes on the second and third floor. I can't even tell what that detail is, but they're up top. Yeah, those two shaded. Yeah, they weren't on the lower one. It looks like the window things changed a little bit. What are those gray shaded boxes?
So those are balconies. Um, they have, we have added balconies in certain areas. It'll actually show better on the next, the next slide.
Okay, and similarly on the left-hand side, there's little black squares on the ends of that building.
Those are balconies as well.
Okay.
So again, through the process, there's there's additions and and removal of some balconies in certain areas. Um. So this is that facade, um, clo- the southern facade. Uh, closest or chasing to North Avenue, these are the balconies on the upper portion. We had the recesses shown on the plans. We just added the balcony onto them. Um, in those locations. So they appear slightly darker, but it's just the the mesh railings. So here, uh, keeping the storefront windows along the base. Even the the windows patterning. Um, and we, the only change here was adding the balconies.
We've also added a door on the base, haven't you?
And and the and the door, yes, I apologize.
Geez, and again, the roof line, the roof line and detail has changed.
The roof line of this this. Elevation has been the same. The the cornice is still here. There's the only difference with this would be the height of the building. Um. Has adjusted by two feet.
More or less?
Um, more.
So. Okay. Keep going. Have the height of, did the height of building one change?
Uh, no.
Why did you have to increase the height as a building two feet?
Uh, it's actually taken from the the average grade, so. The previous elevation showed it from. The ground level to the roof surface. This shows it from the average grade plane, so that's why the height difference is there. Um, if you're. Um, if you're looking at the actual measurements, we measured from. Floor to floor and the top floor went to the top of the corners. Um, the parapet got raised slightly based on the, the fact that we had roof trusses. Um. In the previously approved elevations, we have a very thin roof, as you can see. It wasn't buildable, um. So we added. The extra thickness for the, the roof structure itself.
Okay.
From the end elevation on the north side of the Lowell Street side of this. This is a change where we added a balcony. Uh, in the alcove that was shown on the right hand side of the previously approved plan. In doing so, we adjusted the proportions of the, the wood. Um, we've kept the roof. The way it was previously shown, we've just adjusted the overall width of that. Um, we have adjusted the windows based on the. The units within the building itself. Going to building three. Um. Again, this is the building material palette, building three. We haven't proposed any changes in materials themselves. Um, so this would be the east elevation along the south side or the lake side of the building. Um, the key on the bottom of the page shows these are. These are the ends of the courtyards. Um, again, here we're keeping the ma, the massing. Um. Materials, we've adjusted. Some of the, the locations of the windows. Um. Balconies and. Are all staying in the same locations on this elevation specifically. Uh, I would say this has minimal changes.
And what's the height differential here? Two feet again?
This is actually two feet shorter. It's forty seven feet. It's at forty five feet now measured to the, the roof surface. So. I would say the overall height has not changed. Just measured two different locations.
Just a, just a quick note on the, on, in terms of the. Dimensional table. In terms of that, what we got approved, we had thirty five foot buildings that were approved. Uh, for buildings one and two. That, you know, I think as Chris is. Explaining here, when the average grade was calculated, how the exact, you know. Spot grades moved around. Which is what's causing that, that. From a, a technical perspective for that height to increase. But what we're still showing is less than the thirty five feet approved in the, in the dimensional table.
What I'm looking at is the difference between a roof that's in, not constructable. And what happens on that cornice line versus the very thick. Roof now that you have that is buildable. That's really what I'm focusing on and how much taller. This building looks based on that.
Yeah.
That's all. I mean, it's just. It's what my eye goes to.
The proposed elevation, the top of the proposed elevation. Cut off or? Are things? Is it really as different as it seems? Am I, it, it seems like there is no. I guess it's the cornice that keeps, Chip keeps talking about on this, this one. Above the sort of middle white section, the middle gray section, the very left white section. Looks like there's some mechanical up there now or something. Above the. Left brown section.
Yeah, so there's. Uh, in the previously approved. I think the elevator overruns. Were not shown. Um, the proposed elevation does show that. So that. That element above the brown on the left hand side is the elevator overrun that's that back. Um, from this elevation specifically, it's probably. Forty five to fifty feet away.
So it is a change though. I just want to make sure we're pointing out all the, the changes. I mean, we. I don't, we're not going to beat that, that horse, Dave already, but. It, yeah, okay.
It's something that wasn't shown on the previously approved elevation. You're not going to see that from. It's something that wasn't modeled. It wasn't designed.
No, understood, but it is a. It understood, but it is a change in the plan. So we need to know what we're looking at, right? That, I, I, whether you can see it from grade or not, we need to understand because we can see it right now. And I guess that doesn't answer the question of, of. The cornice above the middle white, the left white and the middle gray section, if that. Is just straight up being removed or it just doesn't show up in this elevation and put it does show up in the plans?
Part, part of what you're seeing Greg. Is if you look at the window heights, they're different.
Yep.
So what happens is that cornice line area above the top window. Is greater. Than the, than the lower one, because the windows basically are smaller in height. The, the several buildings in here. Have, um, elevators. And one of them has an elevator with a staircase going to it, which sticks up much higher. I've seen that come across yet. It must be coming up shortly. But where there's just an elevator override, it only projects slightly above the. Cornice line, but in the case where there's a staircase. Uh, where you can walk onto the roof, that. That override is going to be much higher. And you'll, I think you'll see it in one of these things.
Well, that's not what I'm talking about.
With all due respect, we're going to see all of this from the highway going by.
And, and that, that's not what I'm asking about. If you go above the middle white section.
Yeah, it's this section here.
Yeah, there looks to be some cornice in the previously approved elevation and maybe cornice isn't the right word. I don't know, some sort of overhang. But it's not there in the proposed elevation.
Cornice is the right term.
Okay. And it's not, it's no longer there in the proposed elevation. That I can see.
Yeah, I think it's. Some of this is, is challenging to see. Obviously there, it is stepped up a bit higher. It is raised up on the proposed elevation. Um. That cornice, it may have been modified slightly. The intent is to, to have. You know, an eyebrow at that cornice, like what's shown below. It's just not. Reading that way on the, on the proposed elevation. I think some of that's going to be. Probably showing the details that are shown in the, in the special permit package. Um. And going around the building and showing that specifically. That are going to be called out in some of the details.
Chris, I, this is Brian. So I, I hear what Greg is saying and, and. It, it looks like it's just flat, but I think what Jim said is it is cornice and it's actually more than what's below because the windows are different.
Well, no, I'm saying basically the header section over that before you get to the cornice. Greg is absolutely right. But the header section basically in some areas throws you off because of the windows. So what you've got is a header section over the windows. Basically. Uh, which sometimes can be a cornice, but in this particular case, it would have been just a wider area there with like Greg points out. There would be a cornice line there showing something above that or within that. And it's not there.
Yeah. So I agree. So. And I think Greg is right. So the answer, the question Greg, uh, Chris is, is there a cornice there or not on the proposed?
Right now it's not shown that way. No.
Okay.
There is a, there is a, there is a cornice detail at that. Location. It's just not shown in the same way as what's shown.
Well, that's what I meant. So there is a cornice there, but this doesn't depict it. Well, it's pretty much it, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's. So do the building, I'm looking at the full packet, the building wall sections, the A sheets. I don't know if Jim, you've seen, gone through these. They show sort of a, a cross section from the side. Are they all representing? Cause some of them jet out, some of them show that cornice, the parapets. Are they all? Represented on there? And Jim, have you, have you kind of, cause usually you look for those. Roof line details, right? How it all sort of comes together, right?
Yeah, uh, and I haven't since that approval, the original approval, basically, I haven't gone back and compared that with this. Uh, what I, I should state basically. And I only was involved the other day. With these elevations. And with the landscape plan, not with the. Moving over the, uh, parking. Um, or even the power plan, basically. Um, and. So I was shown basically what was going forward. And what I was trying to do was bring some of the issues out. So you all can see it. And this is where you're at right now. It was more making sure that they provided enough information. So you all understood. What they were saying and presenting and not shortchanging this process, but obviously. Um, some of the things basically that you bring up. Were not addressed at that time, at that, in that discussion because it is pointed out, there's quite a bit to this.
Yep. Okay. Is there more?
Uh, yeah, I can just keep going around building three. Um. Again, uh, similar to the rest of the. The, the project. Um, this is the east elevation on the north side. Which is our overlook in the lake area. Got the intent. There are changes to. Window locations, door locations in, in some small areas, but for the majority, we tried to keep the mass and the intent of these, these elevations. Um.
Excuse me, what are those, are those light poles on the top?
That is the garage in the background. And that's also the gray, the gray overrun.
No, those are cross, those are cross sections through the building.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I get what you're saying. Thought we had light poles.
No, so we have.
How was with you, Joe?
The stair overrun that you see on the left hand side, that is the, the stair overrun that has access to the roof.
No, I saw that. It just.
As Jim mentioned earlier.
Right of that, it looks like there was like a. I don't know, pop, you know, light pole up there.
So, so how's that being treated? What's the siding on that?
On the stair overrun?
Yeah.
The plan is just to, to keep it a, a gray panel like it's shown.
So is that one of your grades that, that has already been presented?
Yes.
So, I, I, I know you've said materials are staying the same, but is C one, so see where it says C one of the plan, if you look at the bottom, it's gray. If you look at the top, it's brown. Is that really being changed to brown or was the process really that much different?
Um.
Or whatever caused the printer, the whatever.
Yeah, no, I think that, that's actually an error. I apologize. That should not be brown.
So that's saying gray. I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah. No, that. Should be gray. Yeah, we haven't, we have not made changes. That drastic. Color, uh. Moving that way. So that should be.
Honestly, kind of like the brown better, but either way, I understood, just, that's fine. Okay.
If it went, if, if the brown wins you over, then we can keep it brown.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, going around to the, the backside, the highway side of the building. Um, again, this is the. Northern side of the, the western elevation of the building three. Um, as you can see. On the left hand side is the residential portion of the building. We have the wooden background, white massing out front of it. Um, and then the garage, the garage is. You'll notice that it is different. Um. We've added in structure since it was previously. Approved. Which is some of the vertical elements that you see that stand out that look like the screening. Um, the screening is also shown in the yellow down on the lower portion. That it are these double vertical areas that are shown here. Um. We adjusted the angle of them, so they're not going to show as wide. In the specific elevation, but you'll be able to see it from both sides. When traveling across. Um, in both directions on the highway. Again, here we showed the overruns. Like you've shown on the previous approved, but it's, it's shown. Up on the, the proposed elevation here.
So why do those garage entries look so different aside from those shaded areas?
Why did the, I'm sorry, the what?
So down below, you just see a bunch of. Gray. Rectangles and up above, there's now a bunch of beige and dark gray. It just looks different.
Uh.
I know we spent a couple meetings on this, what that garage was going to look like from the highway. I know we spent a few meetings on that. So I'm just trying to understand what changed and why we changed.
Sure. So the dark gray in the background, I think is, is again, it's the way that it's modeled. You're only going to see the, the wide gray spandrel. Or the, like the three foot. Beige spandrel. Uh, and the vertical pieces from the elevation, the gray in the background is just the back of the garage inside of it.
But down below, there's just a bunch of light gray rectangles. In between those beige posts. And now they, I mean, just look at the difference between the two, what?
So that's.
There's just a lot, there's a lot more detail now.
What?
There's just a lot more detail in, in what, what we're showing now. So the structure of the, the garage wasn't previously shown because it wasn't. Wasn't fully designed. So what we're showing on the inside and what the model is picking up is the inter, internal structure that's able to support that garage.
But the face looks like a bunch of beige. I don't. It's, 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 Dave, it's, I asked the same question today. That's in, it's like you're looking into the garage, you're seeing like poles in the garage, not, not on the face of it.
You're talking about at the ground floor, correct?
Picking up that detail. It's, 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 it's the interior of the garage that you're seeing through those, through those openings. I, I had the same comment. So I, I hear what you're saying. I'm not minimizing. I had the same comment. It took me a while to digest that and understand that.
But, but, uh, to, to Dave's point. Is the upper levels basically in between the structural. On the structural elements. Are gray because that's the, that's the shadow of, of inside the garage, garage. But why isn't that thing dark gray on the first floor? It's only exists at the doorway coming in.
That is the garage screening. At the ground floor. So a security screening, the. It's a, a, a mesh fence that is happening at the ground floor.
Was that ever shown to us previously? We spent two or three meetings on this garage. I mean, I'm looking at five big structural pieces. That now are vertical from top to bottom. That didn't show up in the, the approved elevation. I'm looking at. Screening on the. Ground level that didn't show up in the first elevation. I don't know if we even saw. What that was. I mean, one of the biggest things I think we've said. In almost every meeting we have, whether it's with you or with anybody else. We want to know. What we're getting. That it's a really simple request. And. We want to know what we're getting if we approve this stuff from the previously approved. To propose. And I really have to tell you. That I feel like tonight was, well, let's just show them a bunch of slides. It's not really going to matter. The massing's kind of equal. They're going to say yes. And that frustrates me to be honest. Cause we spent way too much time. On all of this stuff. To think that, for you guys to think that we were just going to rubber stamp this through.
I, I, I don't think that's our intent. I think that's the reason why we're before you tonight is to present those changes. And you, you know, we've spent the last nine months going through.
You didn't do a very good job of it. I mean, it, yeah, I, we're pointing out all the changes and you guys are just saying. Hey, the colors and everything else have kind of stayed the same and the massing has stayed the same. And then we question things. It's, oh yeah, that changed. Oh yeah, the cornice did change. I'm sorry, I'm just not impressed. The slideshow's nice. But, uh, there's a ton here to wrap our heads around.
We just got to the garage. I just, I'd like Chip said, I know we spent a few meetings on. And okay, so there's more detail being shown. Is that all we're seeing is that there's more detail? Um, it, it just looks quite a bit different. Um, that's. That's all. It's a garage. It's the highway side, not the lake side. But. It's just another facade that looks quite a bit different and I just don't know if we just didn't get the detail before. It's just another facade that looks quite a bit different and I just don't know if we just didn't get the detail before. We just know more now what it's gonna look like.
Just, just to correct something for a moment, I just pulled up the manual. And there's a perforated screen on the screen called out for. In the manual, basically for materials. So what you've got is a perforated screen on that first floor.
Okay.
There is a, there is a cut on it.
So it wasn't on the, wasn't on the first floor of the approved plan, but it wasn't material.
Well, that was a material for the vertical. Above it, I, I do.
Right, I think that was the screening that was, like Greg said, for the. Whatever you wanna call it, the. The shades or the.
I think it was for both, but I'm not clear.
I, I, we can, we, we can clarify that right now, so let's just go through all the changes in the garage, so on, on the first floor, there's an Ameristar fence. That goes, it's a security fence that goes the entire way of the garage. That, when it hits that darker opening, that hits a, a roll-up door, which is a screen as well, which is also a security measure for the garage. As you continue on further to the right, you have more Ameristar, uh, screen from the fence. And now you have a door, uh, or an entryway in the garage, which allows for access to the bike room, which is internal to the garage. Um. Chris, you wanna go over some of the details that've changed in terms of, uh, on, you know, on the roofs and the over, overruns? Um.
For the garage itself?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Um, on the left-hand side, you'll see. Uh, this is the, the vestibule for the stair that's on the left-hand side that goes up on the inside of the garage. So there's a small vestibule here, um. And then as you go to the right-hand side, the. We've combined the stair and elevator. Head house, that was previously just the elevator. Shown, that's been combined together, so you'll see that. Across there. As far as the structural elements, um. The, the five verticals you see here are the, the main structural pieces for the garage itself, it's just the way that. Um, as we develop the garage, this is the, this is the approach that's taken from a structural standpoint and. Um, I think. Um. It fits better with some of the fins, but. I know that you guys worked on this as a. For over several meetings, as you've already mentioned.
And what about the wood element, is that different now? Or is it just a little differently?
Between the, on the, on the residential?
Of the yellow.
The right hand.
Oh, the yellow, so that's the same. So that, the. That is the perforated screen material, so that's the same. On both the. It's shown slightly differently from a width standpoint. Um, that's based on the angle of those. Perforated panels, so you see on the top, it's straight up and down on a.
So where's, where's the wood that we ended up with, with the different sized wood?
That's all we ended up with, what, in the, uh, final hearing, it was the, it was the perforated screen that was agreed upon. So that's what those fins are on the side of the garage.
Remove the wood?
The wood, yeah.
And the fins of those shaded gray areas on the proposed, right?
Yeah, these, with the, with the. Shadows that you see.
The shadow, the gray, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Am I the only one that doesn't remember removing the wood?
Maybe.
Okay. Do you remember removing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, cause weren't the wood those. There was some sort of vertical. And I thought we changed it to this.
We showed stuff, I think it was from like Babson College, I mean, there was a lot of.
I know, I know we went through it in many different versions, so.
Alright. Let's keep going.
Looking at the cross. I'm looking at the cross section and it does show a perforated screen, but only in the fins, not in. Within the opening on that lower level.
Yeah, that security fence didn't, didn't exist.
This is moving down the, the west elevation, this is the southern portion of that along the highway as well. Um. Again, here we have. Materials have stayed the same, massing for the most part in the white areas, we tried to keep as similar as possible. Um. Adjusting it based on what, what's happening within the building and the, the. The bumps in and out, uh, on the facade. Um, you'll also notice some small cornish changes here. To accommodate, um, some of the larger massing. That is a. A slight change that we made in this, you'll see that it's, it's larger. On the proposed.
So I don't know whether it's just my eye or not. But the previously approved elevation. Doesn't look as busy to me as the. Proposed elevation. If I took a second and counted the number of windows in the middle, let's just use. A one, S one and A two as that middle brown. And I, yeah, if I took those and said six, three, six, twelve windows, twenty-four windows. And then counted up top, there's. Thirty-two. So to me, that top elevation just looks much busier. Which is, I don't know whether that's a technical term or not. Proposed elevation.
I think it's, I think it's a, a few things, um. I mean, I, I can tell you right now that. You know, on the lower elevation that was proposed, there was a window right in the middle of the wall.
Oh, I'm sure there's reasons for it, but.
Yeah.
Middle looks bigger than the brown middle, you know. Every, yes, all the colors are the same, but. The orientations and the. Just looks a lot busier.
So part of it too, I think is also. Uh, again, I'm not saying that we didn't add windows in these locations, I think part of it too is. The lower, the previously proposed elevation, it was. Rendered differently and it's a more technical looking elevation on the top. So you have more, there's more information there, so it looks darker, it looks. Um, you'll see more detail. Where it was a bit fuzzy in the previously approved, I'm not saying it's good or bad. It's just, there's more information there.
On the proposed or on the previously approved?
On, on the proposed.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're showing the darker floor lines, you're showing, we have vents in there now, we have. Window opening, um, callouts. There's, there's a lot more information on these, I think it's. Not as clear, um. As what's previously approved, and that's, that's. Unfortunately, on, I, I fault for not showing it as. Similar, um, but again, trying to keep it as. Using two different programs and going from a rendering to an actual drawing is, is part of the challenges.
And are the.
It doesn't, it doesn't help our case.
Are the patio, um, fencing or rails? Everywhere the same on all three buildings?
Yeah.
And are they different? Proposed versus a previously approved? Cause they're still different, that's why I asked.
I think they were unspecified before and they're specified now.
Oh, I'm sure we got them on a spec book somewhere, Jim.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so they weren't unspecified, cause certainly was a discussion.
I think we had, we had a precedent, and yeah, so we had a precedent in the materials booklet, and that's what we are designing to.
So again, I think it's just showing differently on one. Rendering than the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, wire, wire mesh balcony, really, is what we, what was approved in the material booklet. And that's. Chris, right, that's what that, it's happening there.
Yeah, it's, it's shown as wire mesh. Um, again, it's, it's the fuzziness of the two, two rendering approaches.
Okay.
Um, so this is the south elevation closest to North Avenue. Um. Again, here, keeping with the massing. Change here. What you can see is. Um. You're not gonna be able to see it in the upper portion, but there's a slight color change. At the balconies. Um. We can't see that in the. Upper portion, we've also added. And adjusted some.
What, what is the color change before we go to something else? If we can't see it, can you describe it at least?
I'm saying you can't see the, there, this shit is the same color, you can't see it in the. In the upper portions, so, so there's, it's shown as gray down below. And for some reason, you can't see it in the elevation. Where the balconies are.
The doors, the doors are bigger, there's less wall.
Yeah.
And why they appear black, whereas below they're gray?
They're all, these should be the same as the other ones as well. I'm not sure what, why they're showing up black.
The shadowing in the, in the rabbit mall?
Possibly. But these are all the same. Same really.
Okay.
Railings are wire.
Yeah, so they're still shown as wire, I don't know why these two elevations have them. As black, but. They are all the same. Throughout, so this is the last elevation on the opposite side. Closest to Lowell Street. Um, for this one specifically, you can see better here, we have the gray and the recesses for the balconies. We did also a, a change here as we did out of balcony on the left-hand side. At the corner of the building. It was, uh, previously just a recess, we added a balcony onto it.
Also, there seems to be a lot more glass on the previously approved. Right-side brown end. Than there is in the proposed elevation.
Yeah, so that's, um, some of the unit in the background. Um. Where there was. A wide open window, there's a kitchen in that location, and we tried to keep as much glass as we could, but. That's where the kitchen was located. We can only put a small window there.
In which elevation, this is toward, okay, so this is towards the. Wall.
The north. It's, yeah, towards Lowell Street side.
Faces RJ Kelly's building, Chip.
Hmm. I don't think so, I think it's on the other end, Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Yep, my bad. Faces, yeah, faces that wooded area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think.
It does, thank you, thanks for correcting me, you're right.
That was the. Last of the buildings.
Not to bring the perforated panels back up again, but, uh, I just found a two O two. In the drawings and it notes on the elevation, basically. Uh, screen perforated on precast garage. And it's the arrow points to that first floor.
But I, but Jim, is that in the? Drawings that you're looking at currently or what we approved?
What we approved.
Okay, so we did, the elevation didn't show it.
Yep.
But what did Matt call the security screen? Didn't he call it something different? Is that what you were talking about, Jim, the security screen?
Um, it, it's actually called out. On the drawer, on the, uh. It's, uh, perforated metal, um. Just says perforated metal.
I think Matt used the name, maybe a brand name or something.
Yeah, Ameristar, that's.
Well, it's nickels, it's a nickels perforated. Perforated metal.
Yeah, and I'm going back through my notes when we had meetings with the, with Chief Scory, that's something they want. Because. That garage needs to, you know, it's, it's a security measure, al- along, along, it faces Route one twenty-eight. And it's kind of a, an isolated area around the site.
I'm not gonna get into one dispute, we just wanna make sure we're understanding what it is.
Yeah, I'm just giving the history of where it came from.
So what I'm curious about is the fencing that's being discussed, the same thing that Jim's discussing.
So then. What we showed it made approved was McNichols screening, so that's, make the McNichols perforated metal. Is still what we're using as the screen, it's really appropriate for the, those, you know, screens that we're showing. The security fencing, which is more appropriate to go in between those gaps in the precast. Is a different product, um, which is typically, it's made by Ameristar similar. I don't know, Chris, you have any info on that?
I don't know. We haven't, we haven't seen that material.
I mean, in the, in the, in the cut that you've got, that the nickels. Basically, and the images that are on there, one is a. Is a, um, is the screening on the side of some building like a garage. And then the vertical, uh, element, which is also screening going up the building. With a five twenty on it. So I would have, I personally would assume that both screens are being used, which would also make sense to have the same material. Basically. Vertically and horizontally. So that you don't change the architectural appearance of the two. The same product. Without someone basically explaining to me that they're different. At this point, to me, they're both the same product. Now, that may affect your ventilation requirements or your fire department requirements, but. I don't know.
Police security department requirements.
Well, they gotta ventilate this building, uh, you know, so, so they can only have. Perforations can only be a certain size. Minimal.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to that, uh, Chris, if you wanna speak to that screening at all.
Yeah, so I think the intent is. It may have been previously called out as an perforated screening at the, the base, but we are using. The Ameristar product at that ground floor from a security standpoint, the perforated screening is. Is too. Dense in order for us to meet the. The openness requirements for the garage.
Well, to, to Chris's, to, uh, Chip's point, we don't have it.
Yeah. I believe the Ameristar is the same fencing that we're using for the landscape everywhere else. I think we did that on purpose, Matt. We had a consistent material.
So, in, in, in our complete building permit set, we'll have. You know, obviously a lot more detail than was presented in the special permit application, which was twenty-eight sheets, we'll have. Thousands of sheets with details that were never shown, because they were, this was all part of, you know, ten full-time people, designers. Working for nine months to get to where we are now. So I, I'm just trying to understand the best format of getting you, you know, there's, over the course of a five hundred thousand square foot project, there's gonna be. There's. I don't know how many thousands, tens of thousands of details we could show and how many. Tens of thousands of different materials we could show, I'm just trying to understand how we can best. For a project of the size, how we can best. Show you every detail of what the project is, because up, you know, the rendering, the renderings have. Developed over time, there's areas that I agree have changed, um. But the the difference in the elevations are also going to look different from what a photograph looks like when you take a picture of the project later, right?
So when are your changes going to be done?
I mean, we
Because I don't want to go through this process twelve times.
We will have, you know, hundred percent construction documents in a matter of a couple of weeks. For us to change those construction documents i- in major ways, you know, that would that it it's that I I think that's kind of why we're trying to come to a a a level of detail that we at least I thought was appropriate for kind of a planning capacity versus the thousands.
I don't think you guys are used to dealing with a zoning board like ours is what I really think the issue is. And I really think that you I I know you heard us a lot during the whole process, but the real bottom line is we want to know what we're getting when it's built. We don't want to be surprised about anything. Right? We don't want to hear, how did that get approved? What does it? Why does it look like that? So when you talk about, you know, so yeah, it's a big project. Do we care about every little detail? Probably more than you're used to dealing with. How you transfer what's been permitted to what you want to build? Because you want to build it and think it looks better? That's what I'm struggling with.
Well, again, we're not going to get to every detail, every nut and bolt. It's going to be on a construction set, right? A building set clearly. But there's a lot of detail that we went through over the course of the special permit. And I'll be honest with you. I got a splitting headache for the last two hours listening to all these changes, and I got to apologize to the other matter who is asking for a wireless facility finding we could have done in five minutes. And we made him wait two plus hours. Um, I if I had known it, there was this much involved, I would have taken it first. Sorry. Um, guys, I don't know where we go from here. Take a step back and take a breath. Does anyone on the board think these are collectively minor modifications? If we don't, then we don't approve them and they got to file up for a new
Right, so.
And we got to go again, just keep that in mind, but that not that that should sway you. Um, but do we feel that in their totality, do these materially change what the board approved last year? Or are they, even though there's a lot of them? Are they minor enough that I don't even know of a good definition anymore, Brian. I don't know legally. I know if I asked town council if these are minor, he'd probably say no. Um. Well, I can tell you, I have case law in front of me to say, what's the definition of a minor modification? We struggled with it with one-on-one Cedar Street. Because there were like thirty things changing on a single lot, right? We struggled with it then. Well, I can, I can. And we just listened to two hours. I can give you some input on that, Mr. Chair, because as Mr. Topell said, and to your board's credit, to your board's credit, in the time that your board puts into all of your projects, you're hands-on. And um, and I think we're, you know, CCNF, you know, dealing in you know, some other uh uh communities and other communities that that I permit in that, you know, they're not hands-on. So I think Chip is right that, you know, CCNF is not used to this process because, uh, quite frankly, in a lot of cities and towns, the changes that they're proposing would just be done administratively through the building department. They wouldn't be back at the board because when they're changing, you know, um, they would not look at it that way. It's just the way they are. And I'm not, I again, I'm crediting your board, so I I think they're clearly minor. Whether they're acceptable to your board or not, that's that's your decision. Um, but um, you know, there's no, there's no, there's no, you know, major changes of, you know, huge footprint changes, uh, you know, major height differential. You know, let's say, you know, our setbacks were going to be thirty feet different. Oh, but they still comply. We're talking, we're talking, you know, two feet. So, you know, in totality, they they are minor. I I understand, you know, whether you like them or not and want to approve them, that's that's for you to decide and talk about.
I mean, to to me, Mr. Chair, I believe that, you know, the presentation as such where they were saying the massing is still the same. I agree with that. The color palette hasn't changed. I agree with that. Has any one elevation not changed significantly? No, they've all changed significantly. Is the intent and the flavor of the project the same? Yes. The only thing I'm really uncomfortable with, and this is me personally, is back on, I I forget what it is even now where I think it might have been building one, Greg helped me with where the root where an outside deck got eliminated. And there was no setback in the building. I'm not okay with that. To me, that that's significant, right? That change is significant. And I go back to how do we, you know, and and if we get some details on the cornice and we get some details on some of these roof lines that have changed what I would call significantly and we're comfortable with it. Again, it comes back to knowing what we're getting and knowing what's being built. The screening on the garage, what is it? What does it look like? What color is it? You know, all these things that we spent quite frankly, months discussing. You can't just have a wand thrown over it and say, oh, we changed that material. We've got to know what that material is because it's a change. Do I think it's minor? Probably. But again, it's the desire to want to know what has changed because, you know, the window sizes have changed how significantly. So I don't know. I'm okay with it being minor. I I don't, I think CCNF have been a great a great company to work with. I think they're doing some wonderful things for the town. And I think we can work through this. I don't think we should just pass over a magic wand and say, oh, yeah, build whatever you want. And I kind of feel like we got to know what we're getting. And I I don't feel that way yet with this presentation.
But to add to your list, the parking layout, as we talked earlier, and the trans closures should also be added to that list of things we want to see.
I mean, Jim, do you think I'm I'm does everybody else feel free to chime in? I don't want to take the stage.
No, I'm I'm with you on 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 where you are at this moment, but I think there's a as pointed out by Greg and you, basically, and maybe others, basically, we got we got some stuff that are showing up right now, and we know we need more information on it before I think we can, you know, check it off.
Tom?
No, I I agree. I'm 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 trying.
You have a bigger perspective, okay? You do stuff this size.
Yeah.
This is the largest project we've ever done.
I I would say this. I that my employer doesn't do small projects a lot, so I I have seen this. This, while I agree the massing and everything you went through is in the same place, I just haven't seen this many changes like we're seeing tonight to a project. And I know where you guys probably presented schematic and now you you're moving on to a hundred percent construction drawing, so things happen. So I do think it's a lot. Um. It it was tough to get my mind around what was really happening versus what was the difference between the computer and the printing and the images. Uh, that was difficult. Um, I actually don't mind Chip where they moved the um the balcony at the end, even though it's not a setback anymore. I do think it's the right thing to put that balcony facing the lake. I think it's a much more, uh, I think it'll improve that space and it'll bring some life hopefully outside on the top of the building to along that path on certain occasions. So I don't really have a problem with that. Um. But I do just think totality-wise, it's a lot. I think at the end of the day, I can get to minor. But I wonder, it would have been good to have all this before the weekend to Dave's point. My head's spinning a little bit, uh, trying to figure it all out tonight. I wonder if we can take a pass and you know, have now that we have the material, make our uh decision, you know, with our next meeting.
I I don't think we can make any decision until we have this other material, quite frankly.
I I agree with that. I think I'm going to get there, but I think I just want to some time with the material.
Right, because all we got was the full plans. And again, without the changes, we had no idea of the scale of the number of, you know, until tonight. So now we're getting it and reacting to it, and they're hearing that reaction, obviously. So I think in fairness, Brian and and Matt and the team, you know, we appreciate everything you presented, but just getting all of this and then having to react to it and and come to a consensus that, yeah, it's all minor. I think what you're hearing is we need a little more time to get there. And maybe getting a few of those questions answered and a little additional information, please send us this presentation. And perhaps in two weeks we'll be in a better place and more comfortable with what what you're proposing to do.
I would also like
Get that that, you know, whenever we get there to some sort of, you know, not legal representation, but some sort of confirmation that all of the changes are presented or shown in a plan in a presentation like this. No, we already heard you know, however many things we picked out today on our own. Oh, yeah, that's a change too. Oh, we don't have an example of that in here, but that's a change too. If this is going to be what we approve as changes, all of them need to be in here.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's it's particularly important for me when I have to, uh, because I will end up in the end when the when the permit set comes in, having to go back through this sort of stuff. Ben Ben won't do it because he's going to leave it to me to sign on.
We have, they hired a third party.
No, that's different. That's code. Code red, basically.
Oh, just just for code?
Yes.
They should hire a third party for you.
I'll take the money.
He's got his wife working on it.
I I will still, I will still put in my point about entry number one, basically, as to um in building three. And the layout of that, I still don't agree with the proposed layout, quite frankly. I don't know how anybody else feels, given everything else is here, but I I I just don't think it's the right plan. And I think I think it can be more creative.
Jim, you're talking about the landscaping, right? Just a
Yes, yes. The biomass garden.
Well, that's something for them to consider again. I to the extent, I mean, we went through this in a lot of detail over the permitting process, and we did get into the weeds, no pun intended. Um, I don't, if that's what they want to build, it's up to us to determine is it minor or not. If that's what they want to build, they can build it, right? And the tenants who might live there, buyer beware, right? Or renter beware.
But but I do think, Dave, we need to think about what was presented to us, how it was presented to us, the way it worked. Because there were some different levels and some different things, and now they've just kind of flattened it. If I remember right, I think we really need to understand what what it was versus what what it is. And then I would agree with you. If that's what they want to build, have at it.
Well, that that whole area has changed where in fact the meeting space was in the middle of the area. Now we pushed it to one one side. So you know, it's 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 totally different. Hundred percent.
Okay, so what are our options? They're either going to
Well, I guess we have to think why why it changed. Why they want to build it this way versus the other way. And we had a quick little discussion on it, but we don't didn't really understand, you know, it was kind of glossed over.
Well, well, Nick, I mean, just just to focus on this one issue, Nick, can you or Allison kind of talk about that? Was it a drainage issue? Is it, you know, is it?
How about we talk about it in two weeks? Because quite frankly, my mind's mush right now on this.
Yeah, just that one issue, though, Chip, just because it, you know, it it's I I
I don't know that they're prepared to talk about it.
I think they are because Nick, you talked to, you mentioned that there's roof drain issues and
Yeah, we can talk about it. Chris, do you mind going back to that?
Footnote version, Nick. Go ahead. Sorry.
I think it was one of Allison's slides. Yeah.
There it is.
Yeah, so
Let's go to what was proposed.
Yeah, so previously, wait, do you want to talk about proposed or previously approved?
Well, we want to
Excuse me, previously approved.
On the left side.
Yeah.
On the left side.
Previously approved.
That up.
Yeah, previously approved, there was a um, there was a boardwalk that ran through the middle of the courtyard and entered the building. It was a raised boardwalk. Uh, you know, two feet above above finished grade. And below it was the buyer retention area.
And what were the what were the squares? Weren't those seating areas also raised?
Allison, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, that's all. So all of the boardwalk, that kind of shaded area shown uh in the previously approved approved is the same level. There's no, there's no actual grade changes in that area. What's happening is it's since it's a boardwalk condition below is dipping down a bit. That's kind of where the the grade changes is happening.
So it's a boardwalk that led to flat uh areas where people could maybe sit or or spread out.
So so what are the squares? Boardwalk as well?
Correct. We were showing breakout areas conceptually in this time.
Yeah, that's a good term. Breakout areas, Chip, off of the boardwalk, but the same level.
Okay, so that's what Jim's talking about as being in the middle of the courtyard. And and what didn't work with that plan? Why did that plan have to change?
I don't know, Allison, do you want to touch on like the design aspect or at least the layout of the hardscape from at least from my point of view, from a drainage standpoint?
Yeah, we want to hear that, Nick.
Yeah, so from a drainage standpoint, we just, we needed a a certain area dedicated for a bio retention area to to treat the runoff from the roof. Um, and what we're proposing now is a uh it's more appropriate for a true bio retention area. It's less chopped up. Uh, it's more open for plantings, whereas before, you know, a a large majority of that bio retention area was covered by the boardwalk itself instead of allowing room for plantings and vegetation to help treat that stormwater. Um, so it kind of it separates the stormwater aspect from, you know, the amenity space. Instead of trying to mesh them all together. Um, and that's why we kept the bio retention area to one side and the hardscape to the other.
So why couldn't you put the hardscape more to the middle on the lower half and have a big C area that's bio retention? As compared to a patio to Jim's point, a patio right outside these people's window? Question.
In design, I think it's similar to the previously approved where they were kind of adjacent and really close to the um the private units, if you're looking at those kind of breakout areas as we're calling them. And in this case, we've kind of consolidated that. Um, it still has a change in materials and whatnot, but we're looking at an area that's that's kind of easier to flow around and more programmable than what it was before.
Yeah, you can see that closest balcony um to the the seating area on the previously approved. That balcony is still essentially just as close on the newly proposed. But yet the patio has been pulled further away from four of the other balconies.
So to answer Chip's question, is there any way to take that the hardscape and put it in the middle and make a C around, or is that going to have a detrimental effect to the uh retention to the uh bio retention area? If it was the same area, if it was the same area, if it was increased to twenty-seven hundred, but you just took that and kind of put it in the middle.
But I I don't understand that when you got this walkway basically above grade, you got the whole courtyard since that wood element basically is above all of that courtyard basically to for bio retention, basically so water can flow under things and you still got planting around it. So I I I just, I, you know, whatever, really.
Well, I think the point is, Jim, you can't plant underneath the boardwalk.
No, but you it gives you the opportunity for some of that to to soak into the ground as well.
But that doesn't have the 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 plantings are what have the uh the environmental benefit. And and if it's just water underneath the boardwalk, it's not going to serve that purpose. It's it's not going to be conducive for growth when when it when it when the boardwalk is throwing off shade everywhere, depending on what time of day it is.
Well, look at we'll look at the garden area number three on the other end of the building, basically. It doesn't, it doesn't look anything like this thing. It looks like basically what I'm basically a proponent for. I I don't, you know, hey.
So so the question is
I'm not going to beat this to death because I'm not gonna beat this to death because we got bigger fish on this thing at this point, and we got a client waiting for us.
Okay, we'll look at this. Okay, so hopefully, Brian, you were taking some notes. There were some questions along the way, um, materials, uh, the trans. Doos or whatever they transcribe, subscribers, I've.
Transducers.
Yeah, transducers, um, you know, just some more information, specs, pictures, measurements. Um, send us this presentation, please, and if there's any other potential changes to what we've seen. Please send those before the next meeting, like the Friday before. Um, I think if we had had this in addition to the plans you sent, this discussion might have gone a little. Easier because we would have seen the changes more clearly. Um, by getting only the plans, I just, again, without knowing exactly the the scope and volume, it was hard, so you're getting a full reaction of the board.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, if I could, the the things that are troubling me. The size differential in windows. Are the windows the same window that was presented to us? The size differential. What whi- which which faces have the the crown, the the roof line, what's happening, the detail that's happening on the roof line? Those, those are the things, and and literally, we can look at one window. As was proposed and one, one that's proposed and one that was previously presented. So that we can understand on the elevation on all three buildings. I I get that there's millions of details, but. Uh, the, to me, the roof line, windows, doors. As long as it's still the same as what was presented to us. Railings on, you know, what are we gonna see? What are we gonna see when it gets built? Railings on balconies. Those type of things, they need to look at their book and make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, and I'd add, you know, maybe it's too many to go through. Because I I wasn't following, I don't want to beat the dead horse with this patio either. What changes were made for financial reasons or what were made for structural reasons as a result of the design? You know, that would be good to know.
Okay, anything else, board members, so we can kind of put a bow on this, so. There's some homework, hopefully in two weeks, we can.
Do you need to, a motion to continue this discussion?
We, we probably should, even though it was under other matters, we've spent enough time on it, I think we should, we should continue it and just motion it.
I move that we continue the discussion of whether this is a minor versus. Or not, uh, based on the discussion tonight to March eighth.
Second that.
Any discussion? Any regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Okay, all right, we'll talk to you in a couple of weeks.
And thanks for your time. Thanks for a lot of, a lot of time tonight. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, now to our other matter. Dish Wireless LLC at fourteen Audubon Road.
I move that we accept the, oh, no, sorry.
We should probably give him the opportunity to speak first.
Why? I'm sure he doesn't want to.
I have a feeling you're gonna say that, Chip, for some reason, I don't know why.
So what do we have here? Is it uh?
Uh, my name is Arsilia Davis and I'm an agent for Dish Wireless LLC. Um, Dish is proposing to add antennas to an existing. Telecommunication facility. They are.
I I'm I'm sorry, ma'am, um, do you have a plan? You can just share your screen.
Abs- absolutely.
Okay, I'm not, there don't appear to be too many other members of the public, but just for the record or anyone watching this video later.
Okay.
Where they can visualize what you're proposing. We all have the plan, but just. And while you're doing that, I again, appreciate your patience and having to.
Uh, yeah, no problem.
Previous hearing. Um, if we had known it was gonna be quite so. Long, I would have taken this one first, because these are usually pretty quick, but.
Yeah, not a problem. Okay, so, um, this is actually a eighty, okay, it's a ninety nine foot monopole. AT&amp;T is currently co-located on this pole. And, um. Okay, so it's this thing pole, and what we're planning to do is we're adding. Three panel antennas, one per sector, one antenna platform mount. And six remote radio units, two per sector. And one over voltage protect, protection, OVP. As you can see here, um. This is AT&amp;T's equipment. Will be at seventy four feet. Does anyone have any questions?
So the height of the pole is not changing?
No.
The area on the ground's not changing?
No, we're we're within our least area.
Yeah.
Um, I could show you that.
Yeah, we've been dealing with a lot of wireless upgrades, but this is a new installation on an existing pole.
Yes.
Yeah, um, which is the same kind of process and finding uh, that we have to make, but just. Several of the other carriers have been upgrading like four G to five G or upgrading to new technology and that kind of thing. Um, but. Is Dish on other poles in town, do you know, or do you not represent them in other areas or?
I'm sorry?
Do you know if Dish is already on other poles?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are another, you know, at other locations in your municipality.
Okay, I mean, we we have a lot of them, we, like I said, deal with a lot of upgrades, but I just don't remember Dish specifically, but there's a new location to cover this area. Okay.
I think you have a location, they have a location at Bay. I think it's called.
Bay State Road, Bay State Road, probably. There's a couple.
Yes, I believe, yeah, I believe so, that was recently.
Yeah.
Within the last year, they located there, sixty three Bay State Road.
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, no other questions for me, board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Same.
Okay. All right, so, um. Yeah, the uh, again, there's the usual finding we need to make about the uh.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I move that we find in favor of the applicant Crown Castle. Uh, based on the information they provided us tonight to uh, minor modify. The existing wireless uh, facility at fourteen Audubon Road. Um, under the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of two thousand and twelve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Our regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so that's unanimous. So I have a letter here, Ms. Davis, that I will sign. It'll be in the file and it back at the building department on the next day or two. And then, Gail, there's just one in here, right? So you'll make copies, or do I need to have two originals signed?
That's correct. I'll make copies. I'll scan her one.
Okay, so only one original?
Only one is fine, yeah.
Okay, um, because otherwise I could just make a copy at home here and sign both.
Nope, just one is good.
Okay, I am signing that now. Okay, Ms. Davis, so you'll be able to get that from from Gail at the building department.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
And have a good night.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Okay, item four, clerk and board comments. Anything for tonight, gang? I do have a couple of matters, but I'm gonna let you all speak first.
Go ahead.
What you guys want to do, Gail's, I'm sorry.
One at a time. Raise your hand.
Go ahead, Jim.
Um, just to let you know, um, the ambulance, that ambulance on Water Street, that enclosure. Has been in and out of the building department, inappropriate submitted, I think at least three times, I think, right, Gail?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they just, you know, they, it's like pieces of paper pulled off the floor and a staple put through them, terrible. Um, and you might have known that four corners is finally the second floor, wood framing is going up. After, after what? Eight years, six years, whatever it's been. Um, that's about it.
Thanks, um, Gail's dinner.
Oh, Gail's dinner.
In the next couple of weeks, or. Next Wednesday, uh, we got meetings, we get, well, the other thing too, Gail, is. On my list here is, do we, do we ever pick out dates for the summer? Is that on our list for the July and August?
Uh, yeah, tentatively.
Yeah, but Gail hasn't, Gail hasn't figured out when she's going on vacation. So she can't give us dates yet.
No, they're in red on the schedule, um, go online.
All right, so we already picked those out, that's what, that's.
Well, we, they can be changed. I just go year to year.
Okay.
We can.
But in terms of getting together, I couldn't do anything until March. We'd have to go probably mid-March, like the March fifteenth or something, if we're gonna try to get together again, but we can, we can. Discuss options offline.
And that is my daughter's due date, so I just have, I I.
Boy, we we can really set this off.
Sounds like we're gonna do Christmas in July.
It looks like she's gonna go before then, so.
We can't do it on the due date. She, Gail's not gonna be eating out of excitement after that.
All right, any, any actual zoning project business? All right, I've got three items. One, CP TC conference that Gail forwarded from Aaron. If anyone is interested in joining, it sounds like it could be interesting and anyone wants to learn, it would be probably helpful for any new members. Um, which I'm gonna get to in my next point, but I don't know that they'll be joined in time, um, we'll see. Um, but if you do want to attend, I think there is a reimbursement possibility, right, Gail, if people did attend?
I'm sure there is.
Okay, I think I attended one a few years, several years ago, and I was able to submit an expense.
You would just give me the um, the bill and I'll submit it upstairs.
So, I mean, it's ninety five bucks, but there's a lot of sessions, and if anyone were interested, um. Um, anyway, so just a reminder, that's in your inbox. Uh, the interviews for the, um, now two candidates. Um, the attorney, uh, Mark, and uh, I think the woman Kasumi, I think I'm pronouncing her name correctly. Um, the other person may have dropped out, so right now there are two interviews scheduled for tomorrow evening. Um, with town councillor reps and Erin Kokenda and myself. So, um, I assume out of those interviews, if they proceed and complete, will be a recommendation that the town council will take up in a March meeting. And we should have a new member hopefully by then, sometime in March. Um. And then the bylaw review committee, so. Uh, if you saw the email I sent, is anyone interested in attending that meeting on March twentieth with uh, Mr. Bobrovsky?
I'll be there anyways, I'm already on that.
You're already, that's right, but we were invited, they said, just let us know if you, you know, they'll send you a Zoom link or whatever, so. Um, I think Brian's actually was invited as well, and I know he's. Having interpreted and 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 presented cases relative to our zoning bylaws, I know we've discussed many things over the years of. Conflicting terms and paragraphs and clarifying things, so I'm sure he's got his own share of ideas, but uh, we can certainly. Um, offer them our interpretation of how we, um, how we approve things in our town, right? Because I'm sure every town does things a little differently, right? Uh, their bylaws are a little different. Um, and he's gonna want to understand that before he whole, you know, makes sweeping changes to our bylaws. Um, so it might be a good initial meeting just to get a feel for how things might go. So I definitely will be there. Sounds like Joe's gonna be there, but um, you know, please. Let us know if you want.
Twentieth is what? The twentieth is what night of the week?
It's a Monday.
Monday.
And and it's Zoom?
Yeah.
I believe so, and it's just to offer the process, they, it's being covered as part of the bylaw review committee. And now they're gonna look at zoning and with this consultant's help and the.
Okay, so I'm not gonna commit, but I'm sure we can, we, I mean, they don't have to send a link, but. Because it's gonna be listed as a town meeting, correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure how to publicize it, you know, Gil?
They put they.
No, I don't, uh, but I would think it would be on the calendar and.
I think it has to be.
I'll find out, I think it does, too.
I'd love Lieber to have a public meeting offense.
No, Sherry, Sherry puts it out.
And Joe can forward it to us.
All right, we'll just mark your calendar, um, and we'll, um, you know, hopefully get some good discussion at that meeting. Those are the three items I have.
Speaking of committees, I, the the, I joined the mass, what do we call it, the MBTA communities. Subcommittee Working Group, um, that should be starting up, I think next month, it's gonna be. My wife's gonna be super happy with all the meetings I have, the first and third Tuesday of every month from March through probably August or September. Yeah, I didn't think it would be as involved, um, so depending on what comes out of those meetings, I may may have some input. To bring back to our questions to bring back to this group, so we'll see.
It ought to be interesting.
Get that couch ready.
Any other matters this evening, board members? All right, item five, approval of minutes for February eighth, twenty twenty three.
I move that we approve the February eighth minutes as perfectly written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Go.
Yeah.
Um.
Yep.
Greg? Can I vote yes? All right, good job, Gil.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Didn't think so.
See everybody in two weeks.
Everybody.